May 12, 2021. We apologize for the technical difficulties that we had in the beginning, but it sounds like we are up and live and running now, so welcome. Before we get started, I need to call to order this meeting. So I'd like to call to order Village Council Meeting Town Hall for May 12, 2021. I show the time at 6:44. I also show a full quorum with Councilman Mark Elise participating from remote. Do we need to add him into participate as far as talking or remote? It's not on the agenda.
I don't think he can also correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we did not correct the audio issue where Bob could actually speak. Nobody's listening to it.
Okay. We have an audio issue, but Bob Mark Elise, our councilman, is with us on the call. That said, I'd like to, I need a motion to approve the agenda or adopt the agenda if there are no changes.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, we got a thumbs up from Bob we're seeing, so thank you. Welcome, everyone, again. This is our second Town Hall meeting that we have held. We are, our efforts to be more transparent to the community, we're trying to present information to you in a way that you're able to receive it, know what's going on in our town. Not only are we planning to do these twice a year, but we're also available for Coffee with Council twice a month, either in the evenings or in the mornings. So check the schedule of when, and it's a variety of two councilmen at each time. So plenty of opportunity for all of you and our constituents to ask questions, have dialogue. Sometimes the regular meetings we have, you have a three-minute chance for public comments, but there's not really dialogue. And these meetings are meant, as well as a Coffee with Council, for dialogue back and forth. I will do some quick introductions, and also after each topic we talk about, if there are any questions, that would be the appropriate time after each topic. If someone has a question, either in the audience or online, you can either unmute yourself or we will call upon you. As far as introductions, I'd like to introduce Stage Right to me. On the far left of me, Stage Right is our Town Manager, Christina Amos. Also, Councilman Jamie Lyon, Mayor Pro Tem Kim Vandenberg, Councilman Andy Wardman, and again on the Zoom, Councilman Bob Mark Elise. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce you to our staff too, some who are here with us. We have our Clerk Austin Yao in the audience, our Planner Rohit Manchey. Derek Durst is our Park Manager. We have Dev Key out front as the Office Assistant, and Jamie Provozniak, our Finance Person, who's all in the audience today. So again, thank you for attending this meeting, and I will get started by the first item on the agenda with accomplishments over the past year, and that will be Christina Amos presenting that.
So can the people at home see the slides or no? They can? Great.
Can I?
You can't hear me. I wanted to take my mic.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay. I don't think the folks at home can see the slides, but we can actually put this on our website after the meeting tomorrow, and y'all can see this at home if you'd like. Just wanted to go over a couple of accomplishments that we've had over the last year and some of the things that we're working on into this upcoming fiscal year. As many of you know, we have recently bid the new Village Hall project. We are hoping to start construction in the next couple of months or weeks.
Closer, closer. Yeah. Like right up against the.
You need to talk louder. Okay. Can you hear? Can you hear?
You gotta get a little closer.
The Village Hall project is hoping to start in the next couple of weeks' construction, and we hope to end that building by the end of the year. We did also receive a million-dollar grant for the Marvin Loop Greenway. We are still working on the logistics behind that. This, today is our second Town Hall event. We hope to have these annually. We are in the middle of completing the revaluation with Union County. We have also completed the first feasibility study of the Marvin Heritage District, and progress is still underway for that district as well. We hired a new law enforcement officer. He's sitting in the back here. We also hired some new staff in our Finance Department and our new clerk this past year. We've launched a new website. We've installed some street name signs. We are currently undergoing a solid waste feasibility assessment and hoping to start that service in this upcoming fiscal year. We have opened new trails and park projects, which you'll hear about later on in this presentation. We've also had a lot of road infrastructure projects and roundabout landscaping implemented this year. And also in 2020, we have adopted legislation which includes the Land Use Plan, the Park and Greenways Master Plan. Both of these were massively outdated before we updated them, and so we're very proud of those efforts. We also changed the Charter, the Form of Government, to Council Manager Form of Government, and then we prevented no-left turns onto Marvin Road from Newtown Road during peak hours. We pride ourselves in maintaining a very low tax rate in Union County. Here's a list of the fiscal years and the approved tax rates for those years. We incorporated 1994 at a 2.5 cent tax rate. We're currently in 2021 with only 6 cents, so we're very proud of those accomplishments as well. One major, one major highlight that I wanted to mention in our accomplishments was in the audit for this previous year. We did have an increase in our net position of $5 million, so that's about 45% higher than the previous. This was mostly due to taking over roads, but we're very proud of that accomplishment and the net assets for the Village of Marvin. Next slide. Trying to read this, it's kind of hard. Okay, this is the net position. It shows you basically the difference of the net position from one year to the previous year. Net position in 2019 was $6 million. In 2020, it was $11 million. So that's where those net positions changed. And again, we can provide all this detail to you later if you can't see it at home. Fund balance reserves. So your fund balance in our governmental operations is basically your savings account. Through the years, our council has basically reserved money for specific projects, and that's what these funds are here for, reserving actually. Can you hear me?
No, everything people are, I don't have a hard time hearing you.
Okay, you can, next slide. That's just the reserve account. And those are pretty much, that wraps up our accomplishments for the last year.
Thank you, Christina. I know we're, it sounds like we're getting a little bit of responses from messaging. We're getting that you're having a hard time hearing us. I apologize for that. For some reason, the audio is not working as planned. Unfortunately, the day, the times we live in today as far as suggesting, but I assure you, we are always available. Staff is always available as we are answering questions. So if you don't get to your question, or if we don't get to it, or are able to answer it, please feel free to email us and/or, or frankly, just call us.
And we'll have this presentation on our website as well. So.
That's correct.
All right. That being said, we're going to move on to the next item for discussion, which is Village Hall Update and Groundbreaking Ceremony Recap. And that will be Christina.
So as I mentioned previously, we are in the process of beginning construction of our Village Hall. We have, we have a photo. We have a photo here displayed of the Village Hall. This is the exterior facade. The next slide will actually be the interior floor plan. All of this is on our website, if anyone at home would like to see it. Austin, where is this located on our website?
This hasn't been posted yet, but we're going to post it soon.
The Village Hall pictures.
We, it's not live yet, but it will be soon. I'm finishing that right now.
Okay. This process has been going on for several years throughout the last couple of years, and particularly, Council wanted to explore several options to assure we are making the best decision for all of our citizens in our community for future growth. Through those decisions, they looked at an array of different houses along Newtown Road. They also looked at public-private partnerships with two or three different folks and decided that going back to the initial site, which is at the corner of Newtown and Marvin School Road, was the most feasible. Through the due diligence of doing that exploration, we were able to save around $200,000 in construction costs, and so we're very proud of those accomplishments and being able to offer that to our citizens. Again, to reiterate what I said previously, we are hoping to be in our new Village Hall by the end of 2021, and it's a 6,000-square-foot building. We will have a nice, formal council chambers for citizens to come in and enjoy their stay in meeting space. That's all I have. Do you want me to repeat? You want me to repeat it? This is a photo of the groundbreaking that we had last week. And again, I know y'all can't see this at home, but you'll have this afterwards. You can next slide. That's all I have on that topic.
Thank you, Christina. Next up, we have Roundabout Update, and I show Rohit as giving us an update on the Roundabout.
Rohit's addressing some technical difficulties, and I'll just mention a couple of things. The Roundabout at Newtown Road and Marvin Road has been in the works for like maybe five years. I'm not sure if it's longer than that, but at least during my tenure, we have been working over the course of years to get additional funding, to get the project started immediately. And Council, in this current budget that's upcoming, has dedicated an additional $115,000 to put towards the project. We have been very aggressive in our efforts to request additional funding from the county as well as our state. We were able to secure a committed $52,000 thus far. We are waiting on another announcement for another $52,000. We also just recently received some information that we are getting some CMAC funding, which Rohit, I believe, is around $300,000 in addition to this funding. So we are hoping to start this project back.
It's almost $400,000.
Okay, $400,000. We are hoping to start working on the project in the next couple of weeks with the right-of-way acquisition, and construction is still scheduled to begin in the summer of 2022. Until then, we are supplying off-duty Union County Sheriff's Officers to control traffic in that area during peak times year-round. We have also implemented the no-left turn coming off of Newtown Road so that that alleviates some of the traffic congestion in that area. Do you want to add anything, Rohit?
I will just say that, to be clear, because we get, that's probably the biggest question we do receive from our residents, when are those roundabouts going to go in? So those are TOT roads, the state roads, so they basically dictate when schedules happen and when funding happens. We have always had our funding available and ready for them. The last reason why this was delayed was because of a hurricane and funding issues with that, because they had to take monies from other areas. I will say that there were a number of projects that were delayed, and then they brought them back in, and this corner of Marvin and Newtown was one of the ones that was reestablished to be finished. And again, we are shooting for the fall or late summer of 2022. I think I have that right, so. And we have a question in the audience.
I mentioned the funding available. What was supposed to be around the cost of that overall budget?
The question was asked of what the approximate dollar amount for the whole Roundabout. They are estimating it's around $2 million to do that. I will say that we just had a meeting last night, and there was a study being done for another area for a Roundabout on Bonds Grove and Marvin Waxon. And the projected cost that they shared with us last night for that Roundabout was $5.6 million. I will say that there were, they gave us two alternatives, and Council unanimously agreed with a Roundabout versus a traffic light. The traffic light was less expensive, but the Roundabout was safer, and unfortunately, a lot more money, and that's in today's dollars. So keep that in mind. But so, that being said, I think the original cost, to your question, was in around $1.5 million. And I believe the village, any over, cost overruns, the village is on the hook for 50% of the cost overruns on that. Any other questions? Okay. Moving on, we're going to, item number six is the Loop Greenway Grant and upcoming trails. And I think we have Rohit scheduled for that. Rohit, you're prepared to say? You may want to remove your mask and use my.
All right, hello, hello. How's that? That sounds loud enough. Okay, so on the screen here, we have the interactive greenway map that is on our website. The default setting is only the green ones, which are the present ones, but you can check the yellow ones, which are our upcoming short-term, in the short-term upcoming trail projects. Can you advance the slide? There's a couple clicks. Thanks. As I was mentioning before, we did get an over-million-dollar grant in, from the CRTPO to do a part of our Marvin Loop that is from Saddle Avenue on Marvin Road down across Newtown Road and up to where the trail ends now at the Preserve at Yellow Jasmine. And we've also budgeted for a rapid flashing beacon at Joe Carr Road and Wheat Field at Marvin Creek. Finally, we are in talks with Union County to build a connection between Tallamore and Amber Meadows and as well as the townhomes that were just built that's not in Marvin and the commercial strip with the Andys and the Rosades. So that would be exciting. Those are our big, main upcoming projects. Oh, one more, which is the Preserve Internal Trail. So you can check out this web, you can check out this map on our website under Government, Trails and Greenways, and click around, and also email me if you're having trouble with it. Thank you.
Any questions from the audience? Now, we're still having issues with the ones who are online, so unfortunately, we just, if you have any questions. Moving on, the next topic, and I, Derek, come up here, will be the Disc Golf at Marvin Eford Park. And Derek Durst, our Park Manager, will discuss a little bit about the addition of that at Eford Park.
Thank you. We are excited to bring Disc Golf to Marvin. This Disc Golf is going to look different than some of the Disc Golf in the area. This is called the Ace Place Course. This is a family-friendly, nine-hole short course. This will be, this will fit right in with the look and feel of our park. It's ideal for introductory players, young kids, and families who are just looking to have fun, be introduced to the game of Disc Golf. And to make this happen, we really need your support. So I'm looking to fund this with sponsorships, and I have that information available. If you're interested, you can email me or call me. We're going to put that up on our website here in just a couple days. If you want to know more about the Ace Place Course, you can go to innovadisc.com/aceplace. But again, you can go to our website and find out more information about that. But again, my goal date is early July to have a grand opening for that, and I look forward to just how that's going to transform and make our park even better for the families in our community. So again, the Ace Place Disc Golf Course will be coming very soon to Marvin Eford Park.
Thank you, Derek. Next up on, any questions in the audience? Next up on our agenda is number nine, a recap of 424 cleanup events, and I show Christina on for that.
And John, Mayor Sitz, is in the audience, and y'all want to invite him up to participate. But long story short, the event did get rained out. Can you hear me? Okay. The event did get rained out, however, John still managed to rally up six or seven folks, and they collected anywhere from six to 10 bags of garbage. So we appreciate all their efforts, and hopefully, we can do the event again in a more successful day.
All right. Moving on to the next topic, we show 2022 Marvin Day Celebration. I show Councilman Lyon and Derek Durst on for this one.
This was an idea that came from Councilman Lyon. I'm going to be going point on it as far as the organization, but we are looking to celebrate all that Marvin has to offer with Marvin Day starting next, either spring or early summer. So 2022, we should be settling on a date here pretty soon, either May or June ideally, 2022. But we're looking forward to Marvin Day, kind of showcasing different things that make our community unique and great. And we love your input on ideas. Some things that have been discussed are nature walks, garden tours, car shows, you know, showing off the park, some of our trails, greenway features in different aspects. Looking to have music and food trucks and interaction with our local elected officials. So if you're interested in submitting ideas or participating in any way, please reach out to me. Again, my contact information's on the website, and all that Councilman Lyon just comment from the council side of things.
Thanks, Derek. This is something that we've just really picked up on, because there is a lot of history here in Marvin, and a lot of great things that we're proud of to live here in the Village of Marvin. And we just want to take that to the next level. A lot of towns you hear of, they display their history and their heritage and all of that, and it's just, it's an opportunity for us. We're excited about it. It's going to be kind of the inaugural event for us, and we look forward to input from the community. But I think we've got a great start. We've put together a team of people to committee to really push this forward, and from what I'm hearing so far, we're taking the right steps and excited about it. So appreciate all your help, Derek.
Thank you, Derek. Thank you, Jamie. Next up, I show on the agenda would be Marvin Heritage District Update, and I show Rohit. Here he comes.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. So the Marvin Heritage District is our planned project for the area between Marvin Road and Marvin School Road on Newtown Road. The idea of this district would be to create a community center that reflects Marvin's characteristics and provides a place for residents to come together that is uniquely Marvin. The Form-Based Code is a type of code that regulates a district based on how it feels and looks rather than other factors traditionally used like density. And in this way, we can create, right from the start, we can visualize a district that would be the most fitting. And some of the factors that are currently being discussed by the special committee, the Planning Board, and the Council are to require buildings to look like single-family houses as if they were just built in along Newtown Road, as if they'd been there for a while. The next thing is to preserve a significant percentage of land for open space. This was reflected in the resident survey as people wanting open space, walkability, and that will most certainly be reflected in this district. To, again, strictly regulate allowable commercial uses and provide walkability, as I said, and much, much more to capture the rural feeling through the design of the district. There are many opportunities for people to provide input in this district, and I really do like to see constructive criticism so that this process can evolve iteratively and end up being the best that we can come up with for Marvin. On the slide, if you can see it, some examples of, you know, just single-family village house-looking buildings. The Union Market is a good example of a cottage-type building that would definitely exemplify the rural farm-type feeling. And so that's all I've got for this slide, and thank you. Again, please feel free to email me or call, because I'm always looking for input to improve the factors that make up this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Rohit. I will say, this is one of the biggest, probably, challenges we have for the Village of Marvin as we're, you know, we are 95% or more built out, and we're left with what former councils before me, we've always talked about a downtown district. We named it the Heritage District. And it's, what's it going to be like? I can say that I think a lot of us have always gone to areas where they just like visiting. It's like, it's their favorite town and stuff. And our challenge is, how do you create that from basically the land that we have? We've identified the area, but in fairness, we're dealing with approximately 12 different landowners. So it is a challenge. We're using, as of last night, a Form-Based Code, which is more of a developing-type standard that we use. And I think with the committees that we have formed that really are committees made up of residents of what they would like to see in this district, has been meeting and giving ideas and stuff. So nothing is set in stone. I always say, ideas are free, and we welcome all of your comments. And I will leave it to any other councilman if you have any other comments on that. It seemed to be okay. So moving on, the next item for the discussion is Solid Waste Services Update. And for those of you who don't know, then we put out a request for a bid on services for waste hauling. And I know there's, you know, not everyone's in agreement with that. Some people really like their waste company. But I will say that we're doing this because of the roads that we are slowly taking over and trying to limit the amount of traffic. So we put out a request for bid, and I will turn it over to Christina to talk more about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as he stated, we did go out for bid. The last February retreat, Council wanted to look into the opportunity of assessing solid waste services as a village function. And therefore, we connected with Weddington, and they were interested in going out for bid as well. So this is a regional joint effort that we did in conjunction with their jurisdiction. And what we are doing is assessing a few different vendors for recycling and solid waste collection with the additional option of bulk collection, white good collections, which is going to be your freezers, refrigerators that you may have that are sitting in your garage that's been sitting in there for a while that you want to get rid of. We're also looking at the same for electronics and bulk. These other options would be potentially up to one or two times a year, and we would schedule those as special events. That is a benefit that our residents would have that you wouldn't receive an additional fee for from the vendor themselves. It would be included in that fee that's being assessed. We are estimating in our initial assessments of savings to each. We are estimating in our initial assessments of savings to each resident, a net savings of around $150 to $200 a year. We did look at what all the different vendors are charging now in comparison with the rates that we received. And we're still assessing those numbers in finite detail, but we will see potentially a savings in those solid waste collection and an increased quality of service. One of the benefits, like Mr. Mayor had mentioned, was less trucks on the road, which means less wear and tear on the roads that we're maintaining. And it's safer for our community as well. The biggest thing is the quality of service. We want to increase the quality of service for all of our residents so we're getting ideal service that our constituents would like to see. We will make a decision at the June meeting as to whether or not we are going this route. So we're still in discussions. We're still in assessment of these vendors. And if anyone's interested, we're more than glad to hear your feedback. You can send me an email or come to one of our meetings and let us know how you're feeling about it.
Last comment was, or mention it, or ask us tonight. Thank you, Christina, for that. Next up I show on the agenda is, first of all, are there any questions out in the audience? Again, I know the remote people are not able to ask, but no questions from the audience at this point. So I'll move forward to the next item, which is annexation. And I show Rohit talking about that, Rohit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for the annexation update, the village council initiated a push to annex areas that are what we call donut holes, the areas in between the two parts of, the two big parts of Marvin that really do share the same community, but not in our corporate limits. So the idea is that we're first encouraging people to reach out, whoever lives in this area, so that they can find out the benefits of living in Marvin. For example, better sense of community, more volunteer opportunities to be on the boards. We have a better police presence as we just increased the number of officers that we know. The protection of rural zoning through our code of ordinances that is more strict than the county. We also maintain roads and build trails. And not, last but not least, we have representation in regional and state-level issues, which through the Village of Marvin government, we can have a much stronger voice than perhaps your individual home or HOA. And those are not the only benefits. Those are just the ones I put on the PowerPoint. We also have a park and we're also growing our trail network. So the opportunities for recreation will be increased. And that's all I have for that. Again, if you live in the areas that are in blue or the chimneys that's not in blue, please reach out to either myself or Austin, our clerk, and we can get you started on the process of annexation, which is fast and free. Thank you.
Thank you, Rohit. I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Kim Vandenberg.
We all know people that don't live in Marvin, but that are Marvin-adjacent. So if you love Marvin as much as we love Marvin and you want your neighbors to come into Marvin, then please talk to them and have them contact us. And we, as a board, would love to get over and sit down and talk with them. But, you know, we need your guys' help too, to help, you know, get the word out of the possibility of annexation into Marvin. So we would love your guys' help and assistance in that process. So just not staff doing it, but, you know, the community doing it.
Thank you, Kim. All right. Any questions from the audience? We'll move on. Next item for discussion is website demo. I have Austin, our clerk.
I don't think this is going to be much of a demo since we don't have the screen really working that well. But this has been a personal passion project of mine, getting us a modern website that actually works. Among the many features that we have on the new website are interactive maps, including for development projects in our trail network. You can find these maps under the planning for the development map and the trails and greenways page for the trail map. We also have archives for all of our communications that go out, including our meeting notices, our weekly newsletters, as well as any public hearings. So if you are out in Marvin, you're driving around, you see a public hearing sign, you can go on the website and you can see what's actually going on with that public hearing. We also have consolidated pages for meeting documents. So if you plan to attend a meeting physically or virtually, you can go on the website under whichever board the meeting is for. You can find the agendas. You'll be able to find minutes later and the recording after the meeting is done. We also have a new photo gallery. We want to see the bright and happy faces of Marvin plastered all over our website. If you are a shutterbug and would love to have your work featured, please submit your photos on the website or contact me. We also have pages for new residents so that you can set up your utilities. These are not all-inclusive, but we want to help however we can. We also have pages for facility rentals. They really break down the price structure and the amenities, as well as a page for our frequently asked questions. So if you don't know the answer to something and you need it quick, check the frequently asked questions page. It's still a work in progress, but it might help you out. That's all I got.
Thank you. And I will say Austin has done a great job. I know for myself, those residents that have, I meet with and talk to, they are always complimentary about how much more communication is going out and what we're doing with this. So thank you again, Austin, for all your hard work on putting that together. And I know it's something that you're committed to and it shows with what's available on the website right now. So we appreciate that.
My pleasure.
Thank you. And moving on to the next item is the new council seat. And I show Mayor Pro Tem Kim Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this council has been very vocal and precise in trying to continue and get better communications throughout the village. And we want more involvement from the community. We're asking for more volunteers and we want people to know what's going on. One of the reasons that we're having this tonight is because we want people involved. So a number of years, a couple of years ago, we decided that we wanted to have more representation throughout the village on our board. So this coming November, we have, there will be a fifth council seat that will be voted on at the election. So there will be three council and one, and the mayor position that will be voted on in November. It's an even number right now. So when we did the fifth council seat, we always said that we wanted to do the sixth council seat. So we're in the process of amending the charter. It's been in the last, I don't know how many meetings that we've been talking about it. But we're trying to, again, get more people involved in Marvin. So we have voted on that and are amending the charter. So in the '23 election, there will be an additional council spot. So once that election has happened, it will be a seven-member board instead of a five-member board as it is right now. So we're really excited about it. And if you guys have questions, you know, feel free to ask. Yeah, Jamie?
Thank you, Kim. The next item on the agenda is Coffee with Council. I know I talked a little bit about it, but I will have Councilman Jamie Lyon discuss a little more about that.
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that I'm just kind of tag along with what Councilman Vandenberg was saying, is that when this council came together, really the most important thing that we wanted to have was integrity, communication and accountability. We wanted the transparency as well. And it started by putting a lot of things in place. One of them was the website that Austin put together. There was not a lot of information that was going out and being shared with the community. I know when I first started, there was a significant amount of information, kind of going back to fake news, I guess, so to speak. There was a lot of information that was being shared in pockets of people, but it wasn't, no one, there was no vehicle to come to and share information or ask questions or share concerns. So Coffee with Council was created for any of the constituents in Marvin to come in. We've actually had some people that didn't realize they didn't live in Marvin come in as well. We want to thank those. But for, to come in and have that dialogue, as the mayor said in his open remarks, that there is a public, there's a public piece in the beginning of each council meeting that's basically you can come up there and make a statement, but there's no dialogue. Well, with Coffee with Council, there's a dialogue. So we have it twice a month. We have it once, once in the morning for those that can make it there during the day and once in the evening for those that worked during the day and want to come at night. So it's, again, it's another vehicle for us to be able to communicate with constituents, have a dialogue. We want your information. We want your concerns. We want, we want to hear from you, what's, what maybe you might be hearing in the community that maybe we have, we're not hearing. And if you have that concern, please come, please come to Coffee with Council. You have the town hall. This is an event that we just, we started last year and we'll have another one in the fall. So the whole concept of Coffee with Council, with the town hall meetings, with the website, with all of this information is to dialogue with our constituents and dialogue with everyone because we want to address those issues, not sit in a hole somewhere and just do it as we see it. We want your information. We want your, we want the dialogue with you. So Coffee with Council, you'll see a sign up in front of Village Hall that announces it. It's on the calendars. So, and I know that Austin does a great job of getting it out on the website and emails. So come join us. There's two council members each time and we enjoy having you. So thanks again.
And to add to that, the reason for only two council, if we had three, there would be a quorum. So we always leave it to two and that changes each time you have an opportunity. I will say one of the benefits of that recently was when there was a proposal from a developer to put 300 apartments in a location that was near a neighborhood in Marvin. And an individual came to talk to us about that. And one of the benefits of coming in is networking. We were able to get him information of all of the HOA individual presidents to kind of get together and make a statement against what, so it's not only just coming from Marvin statements that we make as a council, but also a networking ability for someone, basically a constituent concerned about development, that was able to gather a number of individuals, presidents of other HOA neighborhoods, and basically make a strong statement to Union County because they were the ones that were going to be deciding this 300 apartment complex that wasn't a part of Marvin, but it basically was right in the heart of where Marvin was, one of the, one of the areas that was not Marvin. So that's one of the benefits of that too. Next up on the agenda is the fiscal year 2022 Recommended Budget and Council's Annual Priorities and Public Hearing. And I show Christina on for that.
Are you going to talk about the budget first, then move into the public hearing? Okay. You can go ahead and talk and then when you move to the public input, then you can open the public hearing.
So first of all, I wanted to kind of give a little bit of a background for how the budget is created. What you see on the screen here is the capital improvement plan for the next five years. Basically, what we do at an departmental level is we comprise all of the needs of the village over the next five years so that we know for planning purposes what we need to account for within our budgets. This is really just a planning document. It's just so that we know what's coming down the line and so that we can fiscally plan for these events that we need to take place for capital projects. In next year's budget, we have committed 100% of the capital projects funding for the improvement plan. And we'll go over that in a little bit of detail. Majority of those expenditures are going to be for your Parks and Recreation Department and for Village Hall. Next slide. Also during the budget creation, we have a council retreat that usually happens in the beginning of the year, January, February. And during that time, we put together council priority forms. So we like to see what it is that council would like to see in the budget. And so therefore, we do a rating. The list of things that you see here on the screen were what was on that council priority form, with Village Hall being number one, wayfinding and branding being number two, and the roundabouts being number three. Next slide. Budget highlights. This is just a snapshot of what we're going to talk about within the budget. So without further ado, I'd like to go ahead and present the budget message and what was detailed within the budget. I want to thank all of staff who contributed to the development of this budget. It's been a long process and without you all, it's nearly impossible to put this budget together. Also with council and the many hours that we've spent and the many meetings, talking about all the finite detail of what is involved in this budget, I do appreciate all your time and effort there as well. So the recommended budget is $1.9 million, which represents $540,000 increase from this year's adopted budget, with the majority of that increase being attributable to the implementation of the new Village Hall and solid waste services. The latter service will be provided in fiscal year '22. So the solid waste services that you do see in this budget won't start until the spring of 2022. So those numbers are not reflective of an entire year, they're reflective of a couple of months throughout that year. The recommended budget is balanced with no proposed tax increase. Since 2010, the village's population has grown at a growth rate of 34%, and we've only had a one cent tax rate that was implemented last year, and that was to pay 100% of a new law enforcement officer. That was recommended and desired by the citizens, which we obtained in the community survey. So that was the reasoning for that tax rate increase was solely for that law enforcement officer. Generally, the proposed budget is being recommended at a level that maintains current service levels without significant increases in cost, with the exception of occupancy due to the increases of Village Hall, the new Village Hall. Property revaluation in January of 2021, Union County conducted its revaluation process. As of March of 2021, the assessed value of real property in Marvin was $1.5 billion. That was a 29% increase over last year's value assessment. Some of this could be attributable to the first commercial development that we had in Marvin, the Publix Marvin Garden Center. But a lot of this was attributable to Union County's overall tax assessment going up in general. In accordance with statute 159-11E, the village is required to publish a revenue-neutral tax rate for the year that we have reappraisals. That rate would generate the same amount of property revenue that was collected in the prior year, and that tax revenue-neutral rate was listed at 4.910. Moving into the revenues, we had to update some slides today, so this number may be slightly off, but the main majority of income that we receive is from your ad valorem tax, which is representing about 47% of total revenues. In the budget proposed, we have goals and objectives that implement the new Village Hall facility, solid waste services as discussed, continued priority of public safety. We also have continued build-out of the roundabout with $115,000 appropriation to the roundabout construction. And we also are maintaining the peak, off, peak traffic control with law enforcement during that time as well. We have a 15-year sustained adherence to our capital asset capitalization policy and 100% of the general fund capital improvement plan, as just mentioned. We are funding 100% of what was requested from our departments in the capital improvement plan. We are also implementing a third-party contract with a certified CPA firm to assure professional standards of fiscally sound operations. This is not something that the village has ever done, and so we're very prideful into that aspect of our new contract as well. We are also implementing a new contract with Union County for tax collection. This is going to make it easier for citizens to pay one-stop-shop taxes next year. So Union County will collect for Union County and Village of Marvin. We are also continuing our road resurfacing strategy and we are continuing our robust aesthetical standards with a code enforcement contract with the COG. We also... We also are putting in funds of over $40,000 in the capital needs for Parks and Recreation. And then we're appropriating 100, I'm sorry, $10,000 to the Greenway Loop Expansion, which is the second year that we've done this. Before that, it hadn't been done. So that was a big accomplishment for us. So all in all, totals revenues both equal $1.9 million. And to highlight what you see here, it breaks down each individual category so that you see where the revenues are coming from and the expenditures. Just want to mention a couple of highlights is that you do see a 30% increase in the ad valorem, which is attributable to what I just mentioned with the revaluation. You see a 368% increase in permits and fees, which is attributable to the increase of fees that we will generate from solid waste if that is chosen. And then a fund balance appropriation, which is for PAL bill reserve funding. So it's basically funding that we have reserved right now for roads that we are appropriating into that roundabout agreement. There is an increase in general government, primarily attributable to the debt service payment that we will have for the new Village Hall facility. And there is an increase, like I just mentioned, in transportation expenditures, which is mainly attributable to that roundabout payout. Other than that, all of the details of the budget are in the budget message and in the Excel spreadsheets that accompany that message. Y'all have seen everything. There's nothing changed substantially. I did make some changes based off of our conversations yesterday, but they were very minor. So other than that, y'all have seen everything and nothing else to report, unless there's questions.
They now need to open the public hearing if you're, if you're done presenting.
Okay. Seeing no questions, I am going to ask now for, to open the public hearing for, to approve the...
Not approve.
Open the public hearing for the budget, 2022 budget. All those in favor? I'll put a thumbs up. Motion passes unanimously.
No, you can ask people on the webex if they would like to.
Okay, so... We're going to reach out to the people online, see if there are any questions about the budget that we have before you. And I can't see from the computer we are looking at, so... Okay, we'll give it a minute here if someone wants to type in a question Yeah, they can type a question. Okay. So unfortunately, the only way if you do have a question is to type it in through the chat system. And again, we apologize for the technical difficulties. Excuse me. So we'll give it another minute if someone has any questions. And again, a reminder, all of this information will be on our website. Okay, doesn't appear to be any questions. So the motion on the table is to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Bob says a thumbs up, so it's a unanimous vote. Motion passes.
We'll do the budget at the work session.
For approval. Yes, so the approval for the budget will be at our next work session. It's May 27th. It's 6:30 PM. We will approve that for next year. And finally, excuse me, last item on our agenda is general questions. Do we have any questions out there? We're looking on the chat right now and looking into the audience. It is open up right now. So we have it open right now for questions. So we'll give it a minute. Any other comments from council while we're waiting for questions?
Well, while we're just waiting and looking at a computer screen here, again, I know I addressed the whole Coffee with Counsel. But I, again, want to just kind of reiterate that if you have concerns or you have anything, if you have HOA meetings that, where questions need to be asked or something like that, please, you know, reach out to staff and let us know because we are, we're here to serve you and to address any of the questions that you might have. So it looks now that we have a question now?
Yes, Councilman Lyon, there is a question on the webex. The question says, "Are you preparing a bill for NC? Can you tell us about it?" Again, "Are you preparing a bill for NC? Can you tell us about it?"
Yes, actually, we did prepare some language for a bill that we went to the state of North Carolina and presented it to Senator Todd Johnson, and we presented it to Representative David Willis. And basically what it is, it's a legal defense bill. The bill basically says that if you are, if you're a person in your local community, in your county, or in your state, if you run for a political office and things don't turn your way and you have someone that says, "Okay, I plan to sue you," as a person running, that's on you. If someone that's already elected gets sued, that typically falls under the insurance of the community, the county, or the state. So what this does is basically says, if you run as, in any tight position, and you do get sued, that the government has ways to offset that. Because some of these, it will happen. And I will tell you that personally, it happened to me. So running for the Village of Marvin, it cost me over $30,000. Councilman Markleese cost him over $30,000. And if you don't think these things happen from a legal standpoint, we have paid out in the Village of Marvin over $150,000 in legal fees, attorney fees, and payouts. That's taxpayer dollars. So $150,000 has been paid out, over two lawsuits, over two people. So if you don't think it happened, and as we presented this to, again, I want to thank Senator Todd Johnson and Representative David Willis, who was taking up this, and they are presenting it to the state to turn it to, to potentially turn it into a bill. It will happen. And it happened right here in Marvin. It has cost many of the people that are up here thousands of dollars out of their pocket. And I can tell you, $30,000, it cost my family $30,000, and Councilman Markleese, I've not got a penny of that back. And that's just for someone who wants to serve their community. So if you don't think it'll happen, and that's, we spoke to the Speaker Pro Tem at the state of North Carolina, and she was astonished. And oh, by the way, I'll add one more thing, and then I'll get off my soapbox here. Mine was a federal civil suit that was thrown out, luckily, and it only cost me 30. And Councilman Markleese, my attorney said it could have cost me well over $70,000. My only two options, and Representative Markleese's only two options, was to say, "Yes, everything that you accused us of in this lawsuit was true, and it hangs over me in a federal civil suit for the rest of my life." Or you can fight it. And luckily, it got thrown out as they saw, as the judge deemed it to be something different. And it only cost me $30,000 to serve my community. So yes, we did. Thanks for the question. We did do a legal defense bill. Hopefully, we can update you on that because what I don't want to happen is what happened to us for someone who just wants to serve their community. But this is not a bill just for Marvin. It's a bill for state representatives, Democrat or Republican, county, whether, whatever your affiliation, and your local people that just want to serve their community. So we'll give it, we'll provide an update on that. I'm sorry I got on a soapbox there, but I don't know too many people in the Village of Marvin that know that it could happen to them and cost them tens of thousands of dollars. And again, two people, two lawsuits, hundreds of thousands of dollars that we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Yeah, it is a sensitive subject as we entered after the last election that, again, the real reason for this is for fairness, for all, and for opportunity for those who want to serve to not be fearful of something like that. Because unfortunately, and we've gone all avenues that we could have done, and the only avenue that we see as a pathway is a bill that's sponsored by the state representatives to help us. Insurance did not cover those individuals who were not considered elected officials. So we're doing this because of fairness and for all and to encourage those to not be afraid to run for a position to represent your own community. So thank you for that question. Do we have any other questions?
No, Mr. Mayor, there are no more questions on the chat.
Okay. And anything from the audience? All right, seeing none, I will, I guess, ask for, well, before I do that, I wanted to remind everyone, and again, apologize for some of the technical difficulties. But all of this information will be on our website that you got, we presented tonight. I would like to thank Forest Hills for providing this venue for us. We really appreciate this venue. We're hoping that we will have our own venue within the year once Village Hall is finished. And also, take a moment here. That one cent tax rate that we talked about a little bit earlier, we haven't raised taxes in many years. I don't know how many years it is, but that one cent tax rate went to what you requested as citizens, and that was another full-time officer. So right now, we have two full-time officers in the Village of Marvin. We even have our own Village of Marvin vehicle that was just introduced to us. They brought it by. So I'd like to, if you haven't met either Tommy or Mason, our two deputy officers. One is here tonight. Thank you for being here. Mason's here. But reach out to them, stop, say hello. We appreciate your service and what you do for this community and the job that, especially in today's climate, I will say unequivocally, this council supports the police and what you do. So thank you for your service. That said, again, a quick shout out to the state representatives, Todd Johnson and David Willis. Not only are they helping us with this bill, but I will say we finally have a relationship with people at the state that are truly trying to help us out, whether it's financially or keeping projects in the queue, making sure that some of these big things that you're concerned about will get accomplished, will get finished and stuff. So we thank them for that effort. And they are our voice at the state level. And we talked about representation. It's another reason you want to be a part of Marvin because we're trying to create that representation. With that, and any other comments from council? I know Bob, you're probably not able to speak, but we see you with thumbs up on the screen. I will ask for adjournment of this meeting. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you all for coming tonight.